I'd like to call a meeting to order for October 27th, 2020. A moment of silence, our invocation of moment of silence by Mr. Ryder.
On our last meeting before the election on Tuesday, I just want to encourage all of our citizens to vote. I also wanted to wish our neighbors well that have been affected by the COVID crisis. As of today, there was 810 confirmed cases here in Enfield, Connecticut. These are our neighbors. These are people who live next door. These could be people in our homes, and I hope that they're doing well and that they made it through. I also wanted to thank the students at Eli Whitney. I was there today to DJ a mask parade to celebrate the masks that they made, celebrate cultures around the world, and I was happy that that was brought into our community. So, thank you. And one of the students said, "Mr. Ryder, we watch you on TV sometimes, and you always have different school shirts on." And I said, "Tonight, I'll wear my Whitney shirt." We also lost a member of our Enfield Public Schools family last week, and I didn't know the student personally, and I found out that Mrs. LeBlanc did, so I wanted to ask Mrs. LeBlanc if she could just say something about that.
I did not have the honor of personally knowing Elijah. I met his mom a year ago when we were helping out a mutual friend. I want to express my sincere condolences and sympathies to Elijah's family and friends. You can see this loss is deeply affecting them, along with many in the community like former coaches and classmates he had gone to school with. I'd like to offer up this prayer. Embrace in your loving arms all who are grieving the loss of family and loved ones through tragic circumstance. Where lives are in turmoil, hope turns to despair, and pain is all that is felt. Be with them in their sorrow, hold them with your strength, and through the generosity of love shown by others and your presence within their hearts, may they know they are not alone in their struggle through today. Amen.
And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. Thank you. Fire evacuation. We have the exit to the rear of the chambers out to the parking lot. We have roll call, please.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Salazar?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Hall?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Chairman Crizell?
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. LeBlanc is running late. He should join us shortly. Board guests, we have none. Superintendent's report, number seven, Mr. Dreszek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I remove my mask, I want to show off that it's my mask of Selk the Eglet from our Stolen Early Learning Center that I believe all of you now have. One for yourself. I'm going to just take this out of order because, for the sake of time, there's two things listed on the superintendent's report. One is just a reminder that all Enfield Public Schools will be closed on Election Day, November 3rd. For students and all staff will attend virtual professional development sessions, and they'll be working on catching up on all of their additional hybrid slash in-person activities on those days. But I wanted to give the board an update from what I had shared with you the last time we met with regards to what the actual COVID data is, not only for Enfield but for the state of Connecticut, but also we had the discussion about what the impact in Hartford County is. There's been some changes to the way the data is presented. I didn't create it, but there has been some. Some may refer to this as moving the goalposts a little bit, but it is what it is, and I'll explain to you in a moment. I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. Those of you who can remember from the last two weeks ago, and those of you who might be watching at home, this was the leading and secondary indicator of the infection level, the color-coded magic chart that we go through when we look at what the leading indicators to make any adjustments to school, to school performance for, whether it be moving from fully in-person to a hybrid or to fully remote. That's what it looked like last week. The state has made an adjustment to that. It's a little bit harder to see. The numbers haven't changed, but they put it in a different format. But the biggest difference in this chart is you'll notice the arrow that separates the two chart boxes. And for those who can't see it at home, what it says in the arrow, you know, heading obviously towards your right or toward the red part, is beginning in the yellow, moving to orange, and then to red, says reduce person density in school buildings. And what that means is, obviously, as your cases increase, districts should be looking to reduce the amount of density that they have in their school buildings, which in English means don't have as many people in the buildings. So that's the guidance that we've received from the state. The leading indicators haven't changed. It's still the number of new cases. The one thing that has changed is that when I presented this previous chart to you, you recall, it's the number of new COVID cases per 100,000 population per day, and that was a seven-day rolling average. The state has now changed that to a 14-day rolling average. So although I said two weeks ago that I anticipated Hartford County to be in a certain level by what would have been last week, I wasn't totally wrong. On paper, I was. But what the state has now done is, instead of taking the seven-day rolling average, they've incorporated the 14-day rolling average. So that following week's worth of data after we had met last week, that two weeks ago, still included the old data from the previous week. So although the numbers went up, they didn't go up as significantly because you've increased the denominator, in essence. So now we're tracking this, and again, moving the goalposts is a term that we use with some of my colleagues, but the state did give us an explanation as to why they chose to do that. And quite simply, and I'm not arguing it one bit, it's they believe that, and this comes from the Department of Public Health in conjunction with the State Department of Ed, that they believe a 14-day rolling average is a more accurate picture as to where the data actually trends. So now we're tracking this information. So those magic numbers I gave you last week are not based on a seven-day rolling average. It's based on a 14-day rolling average. So what does this mean for us? I also have to give credit to Mr. Guy Brassah. I call him Mr. Guy because my last presentation wasn't nearly as nice, but you'll notice I did that myself. I had Guy put his professional touch to it, so now you could tell I'm talking about the state because he found a way to superimpose the state on there. But this is just the line graph that I shared with you last week, but to give you an idea where the numbers were. The last time that we had met, the indicator for the state of Connecticut was actually 7.9. And it remains 7.9 for the next reporting period because that reporting period was, when I met with you guys, it was 9:27 to 10:03, and that was reported on 10/8. The next reporting date was 10/15, but it covered the period of 9:27 again all the way through October 10th. So those numbers were combined. So the numbers from when the last time we met was, went from 6.8 to 7.9, fortunately, as far from a clearer perspective. This information is updated on Thursdays now. It's on Thursday evening, so usually late in the afternoon or on Thursdays. So the reporting date that I have now is for the period of 10/4 through 10/17. That's the 14-day rolling average, so the most up-to-date information on here is October 17th. It was reported on October 22nd, but the current state of Connecticut numbers for new cases per 100,000 population is 9.9. So technically, we are still in the low-risk category as a state. But what's different from the last time we met was we were at 7.9. We've now gone up to 9.9 as a state. As far as the indicators for Hartford County, not repeating everything I said last time, the last time we met, we were at 8.8, 7.8, excuse me. The information went from 7.8 to 8.5 for the period when we didn't meet, and the latest information for October 4th through October 17th, being on a reporting date on the 22nd, is Hartford County is now 10.4. And what that means is Hartford County is now technically in what we refer to as the orange zone, or that, as that arrow indicates, start reducing person density in school buildings. Again, that 14-day average kind of messed up the tracking of this, but we're now on track. We have our first, we have two full, two full reporting dates with 14 days of rolling average. So the last two was eight and a half, and it jumped significantly to 10.4 for Hartford County. That's the bad news. The good news is our indicators for Enfield, last time we met, it was 3.9. It actually remained steady at 3.9 for the last reporting period that ended on October 15th. But the most recent reporting period, same timeframe that I explained for the others, on 10/22, Enfield has jumped to 5.3. So as a community, we're outperforming with the number of new positive COVID-19 cases per 100,000 residents. We're outperforming, obviously, the state of Connecticut at 9.9 and Hartford County at 10.4. But as I mentioned to you last time, when you're looking at decision-making and the state is making recommendations to do things on a county level, we are in that county that is moving on to moderate risk. So the good news that I think our vigilance in Enfield, not just as a school district but as a community, speaking with the town manager and I know the efforts of the town council to not only take this seriously but to also, and also the actions of the eight of you, as I'm looking around the room noticing everyone wearing masks, we're doing everything we can to mitigate the spread, and it's showing in the data. I can't project where it's going to go community-wise, but I was happy to see that at least our numbers are trending lower than what our county and ultimately what the state is. But again, I have to caution everyone, that is data that's only available through October 17th, which was 10 days ago. So there's 10 days of data that I'm going to get this coming Thursday that I was, that ultimately will, in some capacity, reflect in the next numbers that I'm able to share with you guys. I did add two additional slides to this mini-presentation I want to share with you, and I'm, until we're in a better spot, I will probably continue to do this at our meetings, and I will also be cognizant of the time as I'm looking at Ms. Thurston, because I don't want to spend 90 minutes explaining numbers to you that you guys can all get yourselves if you want to see it, but I think it's important for those who watch at home because we, I have been notified that we have quite the audience that tunes in for these meetings, although we don't have any audience members here this evening. I wanted to add another indicator that goes into our decision-making when it comes to running schools, and that is staff absences. And the reason I'm including that is not to highlight people not coming to work. That's not the case at all. But for that same reporting period that I gave you the positive case number at leading indicator, that period, period of time from 10/4 to 10/17, we as a district had 26 teachers that were unable to come to work for COVID-related instances. Now, that does not mean we had 26 positive COVID cases in teachers during that timeframe. That is not what I'm indicating here. I'm indicating is the number of staff members that were unable to come to work because of a COVID-related matter. Now, there could be some in that 26 that were positive cases themselves. That 26 will also represent anyone who was forced to quarantine because they may be a close contact of themselves, or there might be close contacts in their homes, or there may be other scenarios where it was a decision on behalf of the district that, that, that staff member shouldn't come to work for a period of time out of, in an abundance of caution for what we're trying to accomplish here, and that's not only keep everyone safe, but ultimately, my main responsibility beyond that, it should go without saying that safety and health is still what's driving all this. But really, our second priority in this whole process is keeping our buildings open. And I wanted to just share an example of what that actually looks like in reality. You know, we often hear about the number of people who are in quarantine, and we've heard from other districts, and we've heard it from this district, that staffing is a real challenge. And I've gotten this question, and I've gotten into some pretty spirited conversations with individuals, including our own health director at times, when it comes to allowing people to come into work or not. So I want to be as transparent as I can. Just because someone is a contact of a contact, by definition, we don't have to do anything with that person. So if you know someone, and I'll use you, Mrs. Hall, if, if you are a direct contact, but Ms. LeBlanc sat next to you, she is simply a contact of a contact, so under the guidelines, I wouldn't have to quarantine her. You would be quarantined for 14 days. Ms. LeBlanc would not. Mrs. Thurston would not. However, there's, oh, every situation is unique, and that's the hard lesson that we're learning through this process. And I'll give you an example. We were notified, and it always happens late on a Friday or Saturday night, and when I say late, and the phone rings at 10 o'clock on any night, it's never good news. I don't think I've gotten a call from anyone at 10, 11 o'clock at night that says, "Hey, you're doing a good job." But I got a call late one Friday night from a staff member, and I have to commend the staff member. They did everything we asked them to. They did everything absolutely, absolutely the way that we were pleading with everybody up here to please inform us, but they let us know immediately. But late on a Friday night, that staff member was notified that their own child was a direct contact of a positive case. So if you just freeze that scenario at 10 o'clock on that Friday evening, the child of a staff member had to quarantine for 14 days. The staff member did not because they were simply a contact of a contact. But we have to take that a step further and ask additional questions, such as, was your, how close was your child to the person who has since tested positive? And as you start getting more information, the more people are willing to share with you, you start to find out that, in all likelihood, that close contact was very close, and it increases the likelihood that that child may have had a higher possibility of, of transmission. So out of an abundance of caution, we told the staff member, "Don't come into the, to work on Monday. Obviously, take care, you know, you've got to quarantine your own child. Take your child to get tested, and let us know as soon as you hear from the testing, you know, the testing results of the child." So it was a late Friday night. The child couldn't get tested until Sunday. Takes a couple of days for the results to come in. Wednesday, we get a call, again, teacher did, not teacher, staff member, correct, that wasn't teacher, staff member did the right thing, called us back and said, "My child tested positive." So now that's a whole new set of circumstances because now that staff member is a direct contact of a positive person, and the clock starts then because whenever the testing date was. However, in hindsight, if we didn't tell that staff member to stay home, that staff member is now in quarantine. The next step for the staff member is now that they are a direct contact, and let's be honest, for those of us who have children, when we're in our own homes, now if our kids are notified that, or anybody in your homes, it doesn't have to be children, but if anyone in your home has notified their direct contact, you're probably staying away from them. But if they're not, you're living your life. You're not wearing a mask in your living room. You're not, probably not six feet away from your family members. I try to stay six feet away from my family members. It's impossible. That said, because of the circumstances, we, we asked that staff member that they should get tested themselves. So on that, late that evening, we hung up that conversation, and I can't recall if it was a Friday night or Saturday night, they merged together, but I got another call that the staff member then indeed tested positive. So in a case like that, when we were first notified, the Friday, the prior Friday evening, we didn't have to do anything. And if we hadn't, that staff member would have went back to school on Monday and would have worked all day Monday, all day Tuesday, remotely on Wednesday. Well, Wednesday is the day they found out that their child was indeed positive. So their quarantining wouldn't have started until Wednesday. What that would have meant for us is that because of the nature of what this person does, the identification of close contacts on Monday and Tuesday would have been so sprawling across that particular building, I can say this now because I don't have to do it, we would have had to close that building for 14 days. In addition to that, if you're not aware, the definition of close contact has now changed. And this comes from the CDC, not from Chris Dreszek and Andy Longi. In the past, a close contact was anyone within six feet intervals of 15 minutes or more. The CDC has changed that, where it's now cumulative of 15 minutes. So if you're with someone for five minutes, an hour later, five minutes, an hour later, five minutes, that's your 15 minutes. That identifies you as a close contact. And that actually derived from, my understanding, was a corrections officer who was doing checks, wasn't with an infected person for more than 15 minutes at one time, but was multiple times throughout the rounds. They were infected. That prompted the CDC to change their guidelines. So because of those guidelines, if we weren't, some are going to argue that maybe we were too aggressive on telling people to stay home. Yeah, we were. However, in this particular case, thank goodness we did, because if we hadn't, one of our schools would have been closed for 14 days. I've said this from the beginning, the health and safety of our kids and our staff is driving all of this. But the other priority that we have as we live this 20 to 22 hours a day is doing everything in our power to keep this place open. From a staffing perspective, from the amount of students who are coming in, now I understand our definition of open, we're not open fully at the moment, but the way we are viewing this is, we are open, not at full capacity, but we're there. And everything that we do is to try to keep these doors open for these kids as much as we can because one of our fears, in the worst-case scenario, is what some of our surrounding neighbors are having to do is they're opening, and then they're closing for two weeks at a, at a time, or seven days and seven days in some cases, but they're switching staff members around. I had a long conversation, and one thing about Tuesdays is I start the morning off with a call from our, with DPH, which is with the State Health Department, Dr. Carter, the State Epidemiologist, and then at 1:00, I have a meeting with the Hartford Area Superintendent. And one thing that was consistent, you got to do everything you can to keep your schools open as they are or as, as you were planning to, but what's worse? Having to open them gradually like we have or opening them and shutting them down? Because I can tell you that the superintendents in the communities that have had to close for a long period of time are regretting some of the decisions that they made because they're finding out that that's more, that's having more detriment on kids and families knowing they got to be shut down for long periods of time. So I wanted to add the staffing perspective because we talked about it last week. I think Mr. Ungeyer brought it up with regards to substitutes. This is real. There's 26 teachers for that period of time were out. Now granted, we're, we're a little aggressive, but I wanted everybody to understand why. Because the, the countereffect of that is if we're not as aggressive at keeping people home, that just increases the chances that more people will be identified as contacts, which means more people have to go home, which means more people have to quarantine, and we can't keep the doors open. So I hope that was clear. I'd added one more slide that I wanted to share because part of our job, my job, is to make decisions based on information I don't have. You know, I shared with you earlier that the data that we get from the state is 10 days old. Well, our magic date is November 9th, but I'm going to need to make a decision based on numbers that we don't have at the moment, and I am not an actuary. I don't know how to project numbers, particularly when it comes to transmission of an infectious disease. So I've, what I've tried to do is take the data I have and make a comparison as to where we think things are going to go, and I'll explain that in one second. So this last chart, and I promise I'm done. Actually, I'm not done. There's two things, one more thing I got to add after that. If you look at the column on the left, that's the reporting period from, from October 22nd. Those are the dates during that reporting period, 10/4 through 10, it's actually through 10/17. But the numbers that are in the second column will look familiar. Those are the daily infection rates that the governor announces on a daily basis. And you'll notice there's some of them, some of my, some of, some of you who are, you know, quick with numbers are going to say, "Well, there's some blanks on there." Yes, I know there're blanks on there because the state doesn't always report the transmission rate on weekends. So you'll see it fluctuate from time to time. But if you were to take the transmission, the daily infection rate during that reporting period, and I pulled them straight from the governor's tweets by day, you'll see it goes from 1.6 to 1.5 to 1.6 to 1.7, and toward the end of the reporting period, it starts to jump up. That's when we started to get to that 2%, threshold. The average during that reporting period was 1.7. I don't have any data for the 15th through the 20th to the 25th, but I do have the infection rates because those are publicly readily, and probably available as we speak. So just taking the infection rates during what will be the next reporting period, which I will get on the 29th this coming Thursday, if you look at the data, it started off low, it got a little better, and then it started heading in the wrong direction. So we went from 1.3 to 2.4 to 1.7, then we got, hit that magic number of three, came down a little bit to 2.6. So I'm just looking at the averages. So the last reporting, the daily infection rate ultimately drives the cases per 100,000 that I showed you earlier. We are averaging about 1.7 as a state. That number is up to 2.3 as a state. What does that mean for Hartford County? What does that mean for Enfield? I have no idea. But from a state perspective, what I do know is they're not going down. What I also left off of this chart was today's number because A, it's not in the reporting period that's going to close out on Thursday, and B, it's really bad. So I'm sure by now you all heard, today we hit 4%, which is the first time since the summer. I didn't put it in there, but I needed to get a snapshot as to where we think these numbers are heading because as we're looking at these line graphs, they're going in the wrong direction. And ultimately, we have to start making decisions on how we're going to, how we're going to operate going from, you know, going beyond the ninth and into the winter. There's two other things I wanted to bring to your attention before I wrap up. There is, you're going to hear a lot of conversation about this if you haven't already in the education circles, hasn't really projected itself into the social media or the mainstream media's projections yet, but that's the conversations regarding Thanksgiving and what the impact of Thanksgiving is going to have on schools. All of these numbers, and I'll just stick with the percentages for a moment. One thing that we're hearing, and this was on with DPH this morning, you hear a lot in the governor, you even referenced it the other day, that they don't see a large number of COVID transmission in schools. That doesn't mean they're not happening. I can assure you, there is transmission of COVID in schools. That's as far as I can take that statement, but I can promise you, it does happen. But what they're seeing is the transmission isn't as prevalent in schools as it is in other areas. What's driving these numbers from the public health perspective are two major categories. One is family gatherings, and two is youth sports. Because the mitigating factors that we have in our schools are tamping down these figures that those other scenarios don't have. One of the concerns that everyone has, obviously, is the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, and there's two concerns we have from a school perspective on that. One, Thanksgiving by definition is a family gathering. And if family gatherings are driving these numbers up, because let's put it in reality, I don't know about you guys, but if you go to a small family gathering, you're probably not as cautious with family members as far as wearing a mask or staying within six feet or hugging a relative. Some people are, some people aren't. People get a little bit more lax at family gatherings. The other thing that's in common is open the door. It's colder outside. A lot of these gatherings over the summertime, we weren't seeing large transmission because they were outdoors. As the weather begins to turn, more people are congregating inside. So that is what I'm being told from the Department of Public Health is driving one of the factors. The other one is youth sports, and that's been consistent all along. We're seeing a lot of spikes from youth sport events. Hockey in particular, but what's the common denominator with hockey? It's inside. You'll see hockey rinks all over the state, and in Massachusetts, they're closing down. That said, the concern for Thanksgiving is, again, by definition, that is a family gathering. And as much as elected officials, much higher than you guys, can go on TV and ask all of us to do Thanksgiving virtually this year or, you know, try not to travel, look, maybe I'm just a realist. Not, not, people are going to listen to that. People are still going to have Thanksgiving, and they're still going to be with their families. You hope everybody's careful, you hope everybody's safe, but it's still going to happen. But something else that's also happening on Thanksgiving that we have to take into consideration is every college kid in the country is coming home, and they're staying home. Colleges across the country are releasing their stu, their, your students, your kids, if you're watching at home and you have college kids, you know your kids are coming home for Thanksgiving, and they're not going back until January. So although we don't have any hard data on this right now, there's a lot of conversations of, we could see another large rush of these spikes on or around the Thanksgiving holiday because of those two factors. The congregate activities of families for Thanksgiving coupled with college kids coming home, where there are, there is a larger infection rate on college campuses than there are in regular communities, and the reality is those kids are coming home. The other thing that's different about this is that the large, the, the population, the demographics that were, the demographics of the population that are driving this is much younger than it was this past spring. So it's sort of the perfect storm. That age group of 18 to 35, guess who those are? Those are college kids. And I'm sure all of you on social media, you've seen parties, you've seen bars and restaurants that are getting closed down left and right. They're not 65 and 70-year-old people in there. They're 21-year-olds, they're 18-year-old kids going to these things. So we have to be cognizant of that. I don't know what that means at the moment. I'm being totally honest. I know there's a lot of conversations of us being prepared to have to do something drastic during that period of time, whether it's a week or two after Thanksgiving, doing something like going fully remote. I'm not at that point yet, but I want to be honest and upfront with people as soon as I know that those are conversations we're starting to have, and I had that conversation with, with our local health director as well, and that's a genuine concern for everyone when it comes to Thanksgiving. Nothing's definitive at the moment, but I don't want the public shocked if all of a sudden they get a call or we're sitting at this meeting and I have to make an announcement. But as these numbers keep coming in, that's going to drive what we ultimately have to do. So those are, those are the big indicators that I wanted you guys to be aware of. And the last thing, what I try to do as I'm sitting here, and I'm just checking to make sure I didn't miss anything, in between meetings, I get a lot of questions or comments or just inquiries from people throughout the community. So what I've tried to do is use my time up here from people throughout the community. So what I've tried to do is use my time up here and the, and the platform that we have to try to answer some of the most frequently asked things. And I've covered a lot of it here. And especially when it comes to, we talked about contact tracing the last time we were up here because people had questions about the length of contact tracing. One question that I get repeatedly is there might be a misconception about what being in quarantine means. So I wanted to give it as much of a real explanation as I can. And I can't, for obvious reasons, share details, but I'll give you as much as I can. When someone has to quarantine, being a student or an adult, they have to isolate themselves from the rest of their family for 14 days. What's hard to swallow, it sounds easy when you're on the phone with a student and you say you've got to quarantine for 14 days, you just immediately think, well, that kid gets to sit in their room and play Xbox for 14 days, they'll be, they'll be fine. But then you start hearing real stories about how that impacts kids. And I'll share with you one, and I'll try to, and people have to remain nameless, obviously. But there was a student that got notified they were a close contact. And for obvious reasons, the student was a little freaked out. What made it even more difficult for the student is one of their parents is in one of those high-risk categories. So as a family, they had to take this, this quarantine very seriously, which meant the student had to be isolated from the rest of the family. Fortunately, that student went and got tested, tested negative, but they still had to remain in quarantine for 14 days because you could transmit the virus even if you're asymptomatic for up to 14 days. What the student realized during that quarantine period was they didn't want to do that anymore. So they approached their parents and said, can I opt to distance learn at least until the end of the year? Because not out of fear that they were going to contract the virus, which was real because they had that vulnerable parent in their home, but more so out of fear that they were going to get, become a close contact again and be forced to quarantine again for 14 days. That risk just wasn't worth it for this, for this particular student. To make matters worse, this student was a fall athlete. So when they were notified they had to be in quarantine, their season was over. Which was, again, more devastating for a kid. So the parents reluctantly agreed, we'll allow you to distance learn for the remainder of the calendar year, and we'll readdress it after the holidays. However, there is still something, standardized tests in this country that is required to be taken in person. So although the student's 14-day quarantine period was up, they still had to go in, physically go into school to partake in a standardized test. Student took the standardized test, was distance learning two days before the test, went back home the following day to begin distance learning again when the phone rang. And that student was yet again identified as a close contact. So the student who voluntarily took themselves out of in-person learning out of fear of being in close contact and having to quarantine for 14 days again is now back in quarantine for an additional 14 days. So our kids, there are kids out there who are quarantined for 28 days in a 32-day period. So we can't fix it. We can't change it. I'm not trying to persuade anyone, but when I get questions on, well, quarantining is not that big of a deal, just move on. It is for kids. It is for family members. It's almost as devastating for some kids than being identified themselves as having it. Because fortunately, there have been kids who've had it and they've recovered. And ironically, the recovery period is only 10 days once they're identified. That 14-day quarantine period for kids is having a drastic impact on the mental health of our kids, as much so as being out like we were back in the spring. So I share that with you because I have gotten questions about it. It's hard when you just see it, something that's kind of ancillary, but when you can put a real person and a real kid's story to it, it kind of hits home. And it was more of an exercise for us as we're going through the process to have to take a step back and realize, these are real people's lives, and these are kids' lives. It's one thing if I sent him home for 14 days, he'd love it. But when we're talking about kids that are missing out on all this stuff, this stuff is real. But it goes back to what I want to end with. None of this is perfect. We're not trying to, I'm not sugarcoating anything. It hasn't been perfect. It should go without saying that every decision that I make, that we make, and that we make collectively as a board, that this stuff is the most important. Trying to keep people safe and protect their health as best we can. But we also understand that there's, that we have to sort of balance the needs of getting our kids in school. Our priority is keeping, keeping our schools open. And I understand there are some in the community, because I hear from them too, that don't like the current structure that we're in. And I understand it. I'll be honest, I don't like it either. But I'm comparing what it could be as to what it is. You guys are pretty observant, particularly with what's going on with neighbors. I don't want to have to call this community and say, I'm closing you down. I talk to the same people who are on the news every night, they're saying, the reasons that are driving their decisions as to why they have to shut certain things down. All of us collectively are trying to do everything we can to keep our buildings open. I shared with you the experience of the staff member who had it. And although we're being aggressive, you know, not to say that we're doing everything right, we're doing everything perfect, but we're doing it with in mind that the impact, because we're being, we're being proactive in the beginning, the end result is not as disruptive as it could have been. And that sometimes gets lost, and I hate saying this because you all know I am superstitious, but we haven't had to shut down anything in a while. I just jinxed it. Someone's getting closed tomorrow. But I thought it was important to say because there, and that doesn't say that we haven't had close calls. We have three of them currently, right now, that we're just waiting for results. And once the results, that cycle's going to start rolling and someone's getting closed down. We had one Friday night where we thought we were closing down four schools, based on the nature of what it was. We looked at each other and said, I'll talk to you in an hour as we're walking out the door Friday. We've gotten lucky in some cases. I've shared some of them with you as board members, just to give you a heads up for ones that I think that are going to be large scale. I wouldn't want you to hear about on social media, would like you to hear from, from me. If you don't hear from me in advance, that's because we got slapped in the face pretty quick and we have to react. But they are out there. And there is a reason, I go back to this slide, that 26 staff members were in quarantine, because there are cases out there. But I just think it's important for you guys to know, and more importantly, for the community to know, and for our kids to know, that we're doing everything we can to keep our buildings open and give our kids a place to go, albeit two days a week, hopefully soon, three days a week, and hopefully sooner than that, five days a week. But for the time being, you know, we're holding it together, I want to say by a string, but we're holding it together on the faith and the goodwill of our staff, who are doing the right things, who are telling us things that, that they hear in advance, or things they're dealing with in advance, and they're taking the right precautions to make sure that even if it means they have to take a step back, the building can still remain open. So I know the million-dollar question is, what am I going to do on October 9th? So I have two options right now. November 9th, I'm sorry. I'm looking at this at the same time. Right now, I mentioned earlier that the data doesn't come out until Thursday. So again, I picked horrible dates when it comes to having to make decisions, give people ample warning. And I said to you last time when I made the decision that, you know, nothing, I did not, I had till the end of the week, but I made it on Tuesday night when, when the chairman asked me because I didn't think anything that was going to change my mind. I don't see the inform, I mean, 3:30 today, I was a little more hopeful. And 4 o'clock, governor's tweet came out that we're at 4%. Like, you gotta be kidding me. I thought 2:00 was going to cap it, we're going to start heading down. So I don't know. So the reality is, I can wait until Thursday for the latest data set to come back. But right now, what, according to the state guidelines, where we are in the chart is where that arrow is telling us to do, reduce the density. However, there is some good news in all this. And I, this is, and I will end with this. A lot of districts right now are dealing with figuring out how to reduce density in their buildings. We're fortunate in the sense that we were a little bit more preemptive in the beginning, but we're actually already there. We don't have to do anything with regards to this chart, because what this chart is indicating is if you're in full day, you should start transitioning back to hybrid. Because we stayed in hybrid and we gave it all, and part of the reason, and again, none of us are prophets, but when we had to make this decision, the scientists were telling us, this was coming. The health department was telling us, this is coming. It's coming to the state, it's coming to your county. We've been fortunate, it's not as bad in our town. But we knew, and that's why I was hesitant to pull the plug in the beginning and say, let's put everybody in there, because I was afraid I was going to have to pull them out. The good news for us is, we don't have to, the one thing we're trying to avoid is having to retract and take things away. Because once you give something to someone, especially kids, it's very difficult to take it back. So in having conversations with our health director, having conversations with colleagues, and looking at the data, everybody is telling me, stay the course for now. I was holding out hope to say, before I made that final decision, to see when the numbers come in on Thursday. I can, if it's more convenient for families to know at this moment, I just showed you the numbers to say that for the time being, I would say until Thanksgiving. And I'm using Thanksgiving as an example because I don't know what pre, what post Thanksgiving is going to look like. I want to make that very clear. We're hearing a lot of different things about Thanksgiving. But I don't see any indication for us to change what we're doing, because although it's not perfect, it is working. Our buildings are open. I can't make that promise to you if I put everybody back in. So that's where I am. If it's, when it comes to board member comments, if you guys want me to answer, just give you an answer tonight. It gives me another 20 minutes to think about it. But, you know, the way we left it this afternoon was, let's just wait to see that the numbers come in on Thursday. But then, again, we all got punched in the gut when the governor made the announcement today. So that's where I am. I'm going to stop there because I went longer than I anticipated.
So we're going to, we're going to refrain from questions until board member comments. So our next is audiences, and we have none. Audiences are closed. So now we go to board member comments, and we'll start with Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Jazek and Mr. Longy for sharing that with us. It gives us some direction. So I will ask the question. So is it official at this point? Do you, that we can anticipate the hybrid schedule as we are today with cohorts A, B, C, and D through the Thanksgiving
Well, it wasn't official. I thought I had more time to actually answer the first question.
Your 20 minutes are up.
As of, what was official was, we were heading in that direction. I was waiting for confirmation on Thursday.
Okay.
What's changed is today's information didn't help. It was actually more concerning that it's not going, it's actually going in another direction. And to be honest, my, my thought process on this is, we're talking about two weeks. Like Thanksgiving right now is a red flag. So for two weeks, do we want to jam everybody back in? And the worst-case scenario for me is we put everybody in, have to close for two weeks, and then people are quarantining during Thanksgiving.
No, I'm okay with.
No, I'm not, and I'm not taking a side either way. So that, that's where, I don't want to seem indecisive, but I was really hoping, when I was putting this together, it was, I'm going to tell you on Friday.
Gotcha.
But right now, after today, I'm more leaning toward, I don't see anything changing for me to change, that's going to change online. And to be honest, you know, the state recommendation is, and I think somebody mentioned it before the meeting, that other districts are sending letters saying we were going to start Monday. I've changed my mind.
Yep.
I spoke to every Hartford area superintendent, and they all pretty much said the same thing, is we're putting our plans on hold. Everybody was coming back on or around the same time. I talked to one superintendent who said, I'm just pushing it off to January at this point. I don't want to put families through this anymore. And I, and I'm actually through, I'm, I'm almost at that point as well. I'm, I'm hopeful. I want to get our kids in more if we can. But at the same time, I understand as a parent, trying to juggle, you know, when is this going to end? And that's where you continue to ask for people's patience. But, you know, if, if it's easier as a board collectively for me to just make it official tonight, I'm, I'm willing to. Like I said, I had a call and audible today. When this was done, it was, I'm, I'm going to fill in the last chart here on Thursday. We're going to look at it Friday, and I'm going to make an announcement. Today kind of screwed that up.
Now, as a parent of two public school students myself, I appreciate that. And all I would ask is if, you know, as soon as you know, the sooner we tell parents, the easier it is for everybody involved, which you know as well, and our staff that have kids in, in this district or others. Related to that, I saw the S-word on the weather forecast for Friday. So I wanted to ask, I know that you, in the past, didn't have 100% clarity or guidance from the state, but I was wondering if it's, I know from your standpoint, if it's a snow day, we're just going to do distance learning. But I was wondering if that was like official now? And if, and if a snow day occurred, if we're pushing our June dates back, et cetera, where do, where do we, where do we at that?
I do have good news I can report, and it just came through today. The commissioner informed us all that we are permitted to use remote days for the S-days. And I think the weather, obviously, the weather forecasts prompted that letter to come out to us all today. So we are able to substitute snow days as remote days. I have, I've also heard from others, just to be fair, that certain people appreciate snow days because quite frankly, they just want a break. So we're going to have to be cognizant of that as we go. So if we get a very tough winter, instead of saying we're going remote four, five, six, seven days in a row, you know, it would not be out of character for me to say, you know what? Tomorrow, we're not doing anything. It's just going to be a regular snow day because we have a couple built in the calendar. But to answer your other question, we will, knowing the information I now have in my possession, we will be getting out on time this year.
Good.
My intention is to utilize remote days as much as humanly possible. I am not extending the school year. We are not going to June 29th like we did a couple of years ago. All those crazy things you blamed me for a couple of years ago about making kids go to school until the end, the end of June, I'm not doing that. So we are, that is official. We, we can substitute those days. The difference is just going to be, depending upon the circumstances, there's going to come a time where kids are going to need a break from staring at this all day. Teachers are going to need a break from teaching on us all day. And parents, you know what? If you're having a consecutive snow days, go outside and play. Like, there is something magical about snow days every now and then, just when you start getting them piled onto each other. So I, I will be cognizant of that. But yes, if for some reason, there is snow this Friday, you're working remotely, kids. I'm not canceling school. Teachers are working remotely on Friday, although we're not anticipated to get any. And I refuse to accept snow again in October.
Will snow days be the Wednesday schedule for now?
Snow days for, for now would be the Wednesday schedule.
Okay.
What will change on a remote schedule is, in the event we are forced, and if that chart goes up to red, and the state tells us we have to go fully remote again, we would then follow a more regular schedule. But while, any remote days would follow the Wednesday schedule.
Well, thank you for that. Back to board member comments, now that the questions are answered. Thank you. So Enfield Public Schools and the town of Enfield are promoting a webinar that is happening this Thursday. I have asked this afternoon all the PTOs to share that. So if you are on Facebook, it should be on each of your school's PTO pages. Riverside Trauma Center is providing a webinar, and the subject should be interesting to everybody. You do have to preregister. There, there is a link. It'll also be at enfieldpto.com. When we leave this evening, I'll post it on the website as well, in case you're not on Facebook. But the subject is coping with uncertainty, supporting the mental health and well-being of children and teens during this pandemic. It's Thursday night, October 29th. It's a webinar, you can preregister, but the code, the meeting ID and the password is also on the flyer. It's, again, this Thursday evening, 7, I'm sorry, at 6:30 for an hour. I would encourage anybody that's living in Enfield and available to attend that from home safely. Hazard Memorial School PTO updates. Picture day for cohort B is this Friday, October 30th, and cohort A is November 2nd. Similar at Eli Whitney, we have picture day for cohort B on the 30th of October. Cohort A is November 2nd. And cohort D are home learning students. Also have the opportunity for picture day. It'll be November 2nd, just after school, from 3:45 to 5:45. There's also an Eli Whitney PTO meeting next week at 5:00 on Zoom on November 4th. I wanted to remind everybody about enfieldpto.com/yourschoolname, so slash HMS slash Henry Barnard, et cetera. All the school pages now have the Wreaths Across America promotion going again. So you have the opportunity to purchase a wreath that will be donated specifically here at the cemetery in Enfield during the Wreaths Across America Day. You can purchase a wreath on any of the school's pages. So enfieldpto.com/HMS or slash Prudence Crandall slash Henry Barnard. They each have a link, JFK as well. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that. Speaking of COVID, again, there's two more opportunities here in Enfield to get tested. Tomorrow at Loaves and Fishes between 3:00 and 6:00 PM. And the following Wednesday, November 4th, between 9:00 and 1:00 at CHC, which is at 5 North Main Street here in Enfield. And they're doing it every Wednesday in November up until Thanksgiving at that location as well. So at least you know that there is an opportunity for free testing every Wednesday for the next couple of weeks. Also this week, I was exchanging emails with the superintendent's office, and I'm proud to announce that we're going to be doing PJ Day again for CCMC. So we're going to be doing the Enfield Public Schools' PJ Day. All donations are going All donations are going to be online. There'll be links on the Enfield PTO Facebook and website for that. You can donate a dollar where your PJ is to school. So I was thinking for Cohort A, they could do Tuesday, December 8th. And then the official PJ Day for CCMC to support children with cancer statewide is Friday, the 11th of December. But Cohort A goes to school theoretically on Mondays and Tuesdays, so maybe they could do Tuesday, the 8th, and Cohort B could do Friday, the 11th, when the rest of the state will be doing it along with Dunkin' Donuts and Aetna and all their corporate sponsors. Enfield Public Schools as a community has been either the second or third largest fundraising town in the state for two years in a row. I think we were only beaten by the town where this was created, because obviously they had a head start on us. And even if you included corporate sponsors, last year, we had beat Aetna and Dunkin' Donuts, who just, you know, wrote one $5,000 check, but we had collected $5,100 as a town. So we beat Aetna and Dunkin' Donuts, Enfield Public Schools. Good job. Thank you, everybody, for doing that.
I think the Enfield Board of Ed should do that. I think we should have a meeting.
Well, I usually wear my PJs that week.
I think we should all do it.
As Joyce, as Joyce knows. So yes, I'll have my PJs on whatever Tuesday proceeds that Friday.
The assistant and superintendent.
They are always welcome to join us.
We have a dress code.
Not bad yet. Spent it the world for that.
And my last question was about staff. I know they're allowed to wear just like a face shield for like phonics and things where they want the students to see their mouth, but in general, they're doing shield plus mask, correct? Okay.
Mass, mass are required, but for the cases where they, it's, it's imperative for them to pull their mask down for the benefit of a student to see their mouth, that's why we provided the face shields as well. But it's not, the face shields do not substitute the mask.
And that concludes the minority leader's report for the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder and Ms. Thurston. Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Ms. Hall.
I have a couple of questions for our superintendent. We, through various resources, have been informed that the state has modified your usage or potential usage for the coronavirus relief fund. Has that made any difference to any of our accounts or had we already spent it?
Well, fortunately, we were ahead of the game. Yes, it's helping to offset some of the expenses that we've incurred because of this. And Lorena has done a marvelous job trying to balance, to put us in a better fiscal position as we start ironically, next year's budget, to try to figure out how we're going to pay for all this and continue to operate. So yes, it has been able, there, there was some initial guidance on the state as to what could be used as a reimbursement and the way they classified some of the money, which made absolutely no sense. But fortunately, late Friday, they did make some clarifications that were to our benefit. So Lorena is in the process of, it had to be updated by Friday night and we were able to get our numbers in.
So we'll make the deadline of December 30th?
Yes.
What has been the record for student attendance now, apart from all of those that have to be quarantined? Is there a regular attendance information?
There is, and I, and I anticipated this question, and the easier attendance data to gather is at the high school because they're, of the way the reporting structure is. And I have that pulled up for anticipation for tonight. And this is updated as of end of last week, but the percentages of students that have three or more absences, overall, Enfield High School as a total, is 6.2, which is actually traditionally lower than what it is in normal times. And that's because students are counted, obviously if they're working remotely, there's attendance being taken during those classes. Ironically, the attendance, those percentage of students with three or more absences is lowest in the senior class, which is kind of ironic, but we're, I know the elementaries are tracking attendance, but I don't, I didn't have that prepared for tonight, but I wanted to at least have the high school numbers in case it was asked.
Thank you. Now, you're thinking of extending hybrid at minimum through Thanksgiving and potentially longer, but should you go in the other direction? What modifications must be met in order to have full-time school? The distance, the spacing is going to be a big question, it would seem to me.
So as far as modifications go, our hands are a little tied because of the physical space of our buildings, but what the reality is, the kids are going to be closer together than they currently are. And the effect of that is going to be, in the event there is a case, it's going to have an impact on more kids as being close contacts because they're going to be situated, obviously closer than what they are. Because of the, you know, theoretical 50% density in the buildings right now, we're able to spread the kids out better. So if you're in a classroom, you know, we're achieving in a lot of places, six feet, if not pretty darn close to it. There are cases where we're not still, and particularly at the high school, kids aren't always six feet away. But because of the numbers, we're able to strive toward that number. In the event we have to put all of our kids back in and the guidelines are still in place as they are, that doesn't mean we're just going to build on to classrooms. It means we're going to put more kids in the classrooms, try to keep them separated, but at a minimum, they'll be three feet, which is what the guidelines, guidelines require us to do. The reality of that is everything's fine as long as there's not a positive case and we have to contact trace. In the event we have a positive case, have to contact trace, you just, simple math, just do this radius around who, how many kids are within that, that are identified, and those are more kids that, more kids and potential staff members that are going to have to be, unfortunately have to quarantine.
And would we still maintain or anticipate maintaining remote learning at the same level? That is, parents maintaining their children at home?
Okay, I don't have a, you know, one of those magic eight balls, but just based on the data that we have, we did see a drastic increase in the amount of families who opted for remote learning once our first positive case was announced. And it's kind of continued to that pace. I think there's a mixed bag when it comes to the remote option and the, the hybrid option. I think the more, and it's an individual choice, but I think some students are actually doing quite well in the, in the, in the remote instance, because in, you can't compare the remote option to what we experienced in the spring. It's night and day. But I would anticipate, and I've seen that, and one of the things we've had in the magic of picking the dates that I did, was having other people's experiences that Judge Arzon. And I've actually heard from other districts who are on a more aggressive schedule than we are, the amount, like for instance, there is an elementary school who decided to bring all their kids back five days and the building was now only at 30% capacity, more, you know, and they were originally at, at about 60 when they were in a hybrid. They lost another 30% of their population, decided, you know what, I was comfortable two days a week, I'm not comfortable five days a week. Because you also miss, even if it's, you, you miss out on that Wednesday cleaning day. And I think psychologically for a lot of parents, even if there's nothing on there to be cleaned, the fact that our guys are going in there every Wednesday and scrubbing that building down is giving peace of mind. I think more so at the younger ages. I don't have a prediction as far as what, I can't tell you, I just, based on the numbers that we have, we've experienced, and we've seen more people opt into remote learning than have opted in. Especially when we made the October 19 switch, we didn't get a lot of people who then opted to come back at that, at that magic date.
So that full-time student body may not be as big as it would be if we're talking numbers?
I would believe that it's not, but we won't know that until we actually, and again, it wouldn't be necessarily a survey district-wide, like what do you, a survey indicates, you know, you're, you're asking for opinions. We just need to know, you know, when I make the decision, are you coming back? We need to know if you're coming back. And then that will make the adjustments on what we have to do, building by building. And obviously, the other big indicator in that is staff, because there's going to be some staff members who right now are able to manage their caseloads based on the density in the buildings and the kids that they see, not just your traditional classroom teachers, but your specialists. When we bring everybody back, that's going to drastically have an impact on their caseloads. And there have been some who've indicated that if we do go back, I don't think I can do it. So we have to balance that as well as when we make these decisions. If we, when we do, when we do just make that decision, is everybody going to come back? And there's, you know, we're getting some data in from staff members that have already indicated that once that flip is over, I'm, I'm going out.
So it never gets easier? Okay. Thank you for your responses. Now to my actual report. I attended the KREK meeting last Wednesday, and what they introduced, along with other policy changes, was one that I think perhaps we might consider. It has to do with health and safety protocols related to the COVID-19 pandemic, which actually requires doing what we're doing, but specifying and regulating it, what is involved. So I will share this with Mr. Salazar, and he can consider it purposes of the policy committee. Every, we have an election next Tuesday. Part of the result of that election is a new legislature, which in January starts its, theoretically anyway, starts its long session. One of the things that CAE does, of which we remember, remember, is set up a list of priorities that they plan to present to the legislature as potential changes or modifications or even new statutes or changes to them. To achieve that and establish that list of priorities, every year, the CAE Government Relations Committee holds a virtual, well, it's not every, every year it's virtual, but it holds a delegate assembly, which this year will be virtual, on November 19th, 2020. And in preparation for that, I have downloaded their proposed resolutions, which is why the delegate assembly is held, to review the proposed resolutions, which are then taken to a legislative committee, which configures them into the priorities for CAE. In addition to the proposed legis, or proposed resolutions for CAE delegate assembly, is a consent agenda, which has a number of potential public policies or modifications to education, which the various CAE committees, and there are many, that have already approved them. And unless any one of us chooses to object to what is in the consent calendar, those will be approved virtually through a single vote. However, if any of us, and that could be anybody here, chooses to say that one of them should not be included, then it will become part of the discussion for the delegate assembly to, and they get very long, to let everybody know exactly why we're objecting to it or disagreeing with it. And then it is debated and it could be voted down simply because we said we didn't like it. So that's what's going to happen on the 19th. And I would appreciate if anyone, and this is something I have requested in the past, if anyone would read any of these, they're available online, or I have at least one copy I can share, because I, I hit the print key once too often and ended up with two copies. Are your opinions on any of these resolutions? Or you're going to be dependent totally on my opinion, which, I don't know, may good or bad. My report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. LeBlanc.
Yes, just a few things. I have a few questions for Mr. Dreszek. Some of the, some people have mentioned possibly allowing high school students to opt in for four days due to the low number of classes, because like you said, a lot of, since the first few cases, a lot of parents and students had opted to go remote. But then that would mean we would have issues with cohorts and contact tracing. And then I'm looking at your recent numbers about the student density, so.
We have had discussions about, there are numerous ways we're thinking of trying to get more kids in, even if it's not just turn the switch and everybody comes back, but maybe trying to gradually bring kids back in. We have had discussions about extending days at the high school for kids to come in, but like you said, it runs into some concerns with, they're no longer in it, even though the kids aren't co-horted at the high school, they're still co-horted enough in that A, B schedule where we're able to track them down. The other concern obviously is transportation. You create a higher density on the buses, which again, we're also finding, those are close quarters and close contacts. And although kids are wearing masks, you know, they don't always have them on. And we don't have bus monitors. We're unable to find anyone that would be willing to do, become a bus monitor. Same issue that we're having with substitutes. So we're, we're trying to come up with creative ways to bolster, to bolster what we're currently doing, but there's, and part of the reason why I went so long today and shared real-life stories is these are the roadblocks that we're facing. And again, we have to weigh, and it's not a decision I ever wanted to make, and I don't want to make right now. But my fear is if we do do something else, does that jeopardize what we currently have that's, we're able to maintain and, and work this schedule? And as I hear things about, you know, events that are still able to happen, athletic contests that are still taking place, you know, we have to think of the backside of that is, we came this close to shutting down. So it's the things that people don't necessarily see in the public that we see as we're dealing on a daily basis, it's outweighing, you know, the risk and the reward, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. I can say too, that I think you are correct in saying that people have said, I know parents have said to me, that if we do go back in person, they are going to opt for the full remote, that they're comfortable with the hybrid, but they are not comfortable with the, the five in-person days. And, and they have that right. And I think that's, I've said it before, I think that's what's most important, is that every family's situation is unique and they should be able to, to decide what's right for their family at any given time.
And the irony in that, Ms. LeBlanc, if you don't, if you don't mind me interjecting on that, is it goes both ways. So yes, that will create more space, we can bring more kids in and we can do it safer. But on the other hand, by making that decision, we're then alienating another group that's choosing not to come, so we have another group of kids who are actually not getting any experience at all. So trying to find that break even point and that balance of making sure, because I can tell you, as, as much as there are, have been challenges with the hybrid, and I'm not sugarcoating that there, that there hasn't been, I would much rather be in the position we are now than where we were last spring. Because at a minimum, we're seeing our kids physically, even if it's only twice a week right now, with the hope that it's going to get better, we're going to get you back in here on a more regular basis, we just got to stay the course. And that's, that's the struggle that we have in trying to not do anything that would jeopardize that, because we can't forget what we went through last spring and how bad that was for everybody. And I do not want to be back in that position.
Right. I mean, I, I can see, you know, I had a conversation with Ms. Clark at the football senior night, and I was telling her that a lot of, you know, kids in high school say, well, I, I don't understand why I even have to go to two days. Like, I can do this from home, I'm successfully learning, I'm doing well in my classes. I've had that conversation with my son, and I feel it's important that he gets out of the house two days a week, attends in-person class, he takes the pre-calc class that he struggles with a little bit. I just feel like it's important, even socially, even if there's only maybe three other kids in his class, it breaks up that week and it gets him out of the house. So I agree. It's, it's, even though it's only two days a week, they're really checking in four. And there is, you know, more contact, so I think there's an emotional piece of it as well, so.
I have the same arguments in my house, Ms. LeBlanc.
The other thing, I just kind of wanted to put this in the universe, just because I actually saw people at a football event this year on senior I actually saw people at a football event this year on senior night. There's a question of if, and again, this is a whole CIA, IAC thing, and I just kind of wanted to bring it to your attention. There's some confusion around, well, since we kind of did this seven V seven, if there's spring football, are we, did we forfeit our right to play in eleven V, eleven V eleven in the spring? So I don't know if you have any information on that.
The short answer is no. I'd rather talk about snow than the CIAC right now. That said, it was very clear that whatever opportunities we provided for kids, particularly with football, that we were able to this fall, in the event they're able to have a full contact season at some point, those kids won't be penalized. Now, some of the suggestions were, as I stated at one previous meeting, that we would begin the football season on February 7th.
Right.
I don't know if anybody's ever actually stepped outside in New England in February and realized that's a good idea to put kids out there to play, but, or who is going to light the fields up for them because it's dark at three o'clock. But that said, if there is, there, there's, there's a lot of discussion about continuing football. I think, around the subject of football, as, this was not ideal for those kids who participate, and I believe me, I have family members who were mad at me for even saying this, who play. I think it had gone as better than anticipated. For a lot of the kids, they got an opportunity to compete, even though it wasn't tackling and doing things that they were normally doing, that the experience was better than they had anticipated when they thought they were going to get nothing. And that may have curbed the appetite to do a winter football season, but I don't have that definitive.
Okay. That answers my question. Like I said, I think that there were some interpretations that because they participated in the seven V seven, that they were forfeiting any opportunity to do something in the spring, should there be a full tackle in the spring.
They also waived, you know, the coaches' interaction, that they can't coach out of season. That's also been waived for football.
Okay. I do have to say, because I have it on my list, we did have senior night for the Enfield High football team on Friday night, and there were eight seniors, senior football players, a senior manager, and five cheerleaders. So the cheerleaders had their senior night too. And I would say since March, Friday was probably the most, one of the most normal fall nights in, in my life, since I've had kids that played high school football, because we were under the Friday night lights, the kids got to play, the seniors were recognized, we were missing the band and all that. And on a Friday night, a nice Friday night in October, if you've ever been at Enfield High, you can barely walk up the pavement. So it was, it was a little different. With that being said, if I could take a minute and say what the Enfield High coaches have done as far as making the season into whatever it could be for these kids, there's not a lot of complaints. Football parents are just happy that their kids are doing something. And it's kind of breaking some kids out of their comfort zone, especially like the linemen with the lineman challenges, those are a lot of fun to watch. These kids are extremely strong. And it, it's really built up some camaraderie around the kids. And then watching the skills players is a fun thing too with their passing league. So I would say, thank you to the Enfield High coaches and the school district for allowing what they have allowed, and it's been safe. And I think that there's been an element of, of appreciation and fun that the kids are actually having. I mean, they're sad about what they didn't have, but they seem to be more focused on their week-to-week passing leagues and skills competitions now, so I appreciate that.
Can I add to that too, now that I'm just interrupting everyone tonight? You appreciate all of our coaches for what they normally do, but what a lot of people at home don't see, the extra responsibility they had to take on this year, and this is all of our coaches, is they have to monitor
Yes.
every one of our kids' physical well-being. So if a kid gets sick from running too much, like they normally would, and it would normally be go sit out or see the trainer, they have to put the protocols in place. They have to notify the nurse, they have to notify us, they have to notify the family. So they are literally on the front lines, because how do you know if a kid is having a fever, or he's just, or he or she is just sweating?
Yeah.
They're not taking any chances. So our coaches have done a remarkable job. And the proof is in the 75 emails a night he and I get after practices that says, this kid didn't feel well, send him home. This girl had a little bit of a fever, but we know she was sweating, so as, we're going to keep her to the side, she's going to go home, get tested again tomorrow. They have been doing this nonstop, including weekends. So our coaches have been amazing through this process.
No, I agree.
As well as Mr. O'Connell.
Yeah. I saw him Friday night. He did the announcing for the football game. The other thing I just noticed before the, the board meeting started, and I don't know if you saw it yet, but they just added Massachusetts to our list of states that have to quarantine, and I find that odd. I have two kids that go to school in Massachusetts right now. I don't know if you guys saw that, and I don't know what, what guidelines they have for that.
One way of getting rid of them.
Bye. They did. Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, and another one. So I don't even know, that could have some impact, I'm assuming, on a district like Enfield, who's on the state line.
Border, so the last conversation I had that the governor led, he was in conversations with the governors of Massachusetts and Rhode Island to reach a similar agreement like he has with New York and New Jersey. So they're not going to ban interstate travel, but they're going to strongly discourage people from doing so. But if you're there for less than 24 hours, the quarantining doesn't apply to you. So if you go, you know, Andy comes to work, he doesn't have to quarantine, you're not staying home for 14 days. He's going to, he's going to try that tomorrow. That said, if it's, as long as you're not staying physically in that location for 24 hours, you don't have to quarantine, you don't have to take a test. If you take, if your state extends beyond 24 hours, then you fall under the travel advisory. However, the governor did say he was going to try, I guess he didn't, because I, that's the first time hearing it, but he was going to have something similar like we have with New York and New Jersey.
Yeah, because they said Massachusetts, California, and Pennsylvania were added. And I just find that interesting, because I have two kids that go to school in Massachusetts, so.
Yeah, did you put that on a list?
And we have, we have teachers that work in Massachusetts, or live in Massachusetts and work here, because we are a border town. So I just thought I'd, I'd throw that into the ring of things we have to think about and worry about tonight. And then lastly, I just kind of wanted to say to you, having two kids in college, this is where the cases are coming. The colleges are discouraging their kids on going home on the weekends, or going anywhere on the weekends except the colleges. And when the kids are coming back, I can tell you from my son's experience, a student went home, attended a family gathering, came back, tested positive for COVID. So I think that I can relate to that, because this is what I'm seeing at the colleges. My daughter's college, they're testing weekly, and my son's college is random, but their cases are growing as well. So I can see that. And then I just wanted to thank you for your update tonight. I think making a decision through Thanksgiving is, is smart. The other thing that concerns me is cold and flu season and what that could do to our staffing levels, because we all know that all three viruses can present the same way, but it's a big difference whether it's just a cold or a flu, and the only thing that's going to tell you that is a test. So once cold and flu season, I think it's going to be tricky, and I think a lot of companies are trying to prepare for that as well. And although you said nothing is perfect, a term that I've used several times when talking to parents is, this school year is perfectly imperfect. And we have to roll with the punches and be ready for change at, at any moment. So that's been my motto since school started. And then a couple of fun things. The seniors took their SATs today at Enfield High on Thursdays, Thursday, this Thursday, the sophomore and juniors will take their PSATs. And then there will be virtual parent teacher conferences at Enfield High on Wednesday, November 4th, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Enfield High is fabulous about sending communications and emails. We got this email October 23rd. There's a link to schedule your appointment, and we have until Monday, November 2nd, to book your appointment for the conference. They're asking that the students participate in the virtual conference too. I think that's important. And it says, because these meetings are most productive when students, teachers, and parents are all on the same page. And I would agree with that, and I've scheduled one so far, so far. So with that, and then I am just going to end again, I just wanted to say something about Elijah Swanson and his family. Two of my kids knew him, and he was the, the type of kid that was just a pleasure to students, and I, it's never been more evident, more recently than what the kids are posting on social media. And not just kids, but adults in our community. So again, I want to take another moment and wish the Swanson family, Elijah's friends, his close friends, and, and everyone, just my sincere condolences to you all, and I'll be thinking and praying of you, for you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Mr. Ungary.
So, so a couple, a couple of comments. One is that I had the opportunity to tour JFK work site. They provided us with a tour of the facility, the work that they were doing. And so we got to go around the building, we got to go in the building, and I was impressed with the work that they were doing, with the quality of work that they were doing. And what I thought was really impressive was the fact that they were able to recognize some opportunities to, for, for efficiencies in both cost and schedule. So first off, they were good enough to recognize them. Secondly, they were able to capture those opportunities and realize them. And so with, with those gained efficiencies in cost and in schedule, it provides the program with a little more flexibility as we move forward to, to do some of the things that, you know, we need to do, and, and not be so concerned or rigid with, you know, with the, with the budget constraint, are we going to make, make, make it in time? Because we're, we're a little bit ahead in both of those areas. So that's a, really to be commended, and I think as a, as a taxpayer of Enfield, I, and from what I've seen as far as the management from Gilbane, they need to be applauded, and they're doing a great job so far. So thumbs up for those guys. Keep up the good work. Mr. Dreszek, I saw the presentation here, I had, I just had one observation, okay, with regard, and, and kudos to Guy in putting the state of Connecticut behind some of those graphs, it looks great. But I think my observation was simply this, is that I, I think the graphs as presented can, can be, can easily be visually misinterpreted, okay? So when I look at that graph, I see, I see this needle going right to the top like that. And my, my initial impression visually is that, oh, this is really bad. And so I don't think that you're taking sufficient credit for the good work that you've been, been doing, okay? And I think if the data were, I'm just a suggestion, if the data were presented a little differently, and I'll make a suggestion. For Enfield, we're, we're like at four point whatever, okay? That's still in the low-risk category. So if the graph was shown with an expanded range, where you had low-risk, moderate, high, and you show where Enfield is, you'd say, wow, we're doing a pretty good job. But when I look at that graph there, I go, wow, look at, we're, we're at the, we're at the top. That visually, it's easy to, to misinterpret that, okay? So I think as bad, when it's really not as bad as it might be interpreted looking at that, okay? So that's, that's what's my impression of that. I see there's a lot of work that goes into that, thank you very much for presenting that, but I don't think you're taking enough credit for the good work that, that, that you're doing. It could be presented a little differently and just give where we are in the, in the whole range. Just a suggestion. And, let's see, oh, and as far as, and thank you for reiterating your priorities. Number one, the health and safety of, of the children obviously has to be number one, but number two, getting the kids back to school. Because either, either they're, they're doing, they're better off at school, or they're better off at home. And I think, I think we agree that they're better off at school. So that needs to be a priority, and thank you for, for, again, reiterating that.
Thank you, Mr. Ungary. Mr. Salazar.
I, I have a simple question maybe too. Is it possible, would it be too difficult to share the data regarding the families, or actually the students that are opting out of continuing on the hybrid program?
Those who've opt out from the hybrid program?
Yeah. Because we, you know, we've mentioned it a couple of times, and obviously that's a significant factor.
Sure.
But I think, well, certainly for, for my personal interest, I'd like to know, what are we, what are we looking at, right? Do we have dozens, hundreds? And how's that trending? Again, you're already doing more than enough work. And so my first question is, is that something that you could, you know, present in a fairly easy manner? I, I don't want to add to your workload, because it's, we've discussed it, but I have personal curiosity, but if it's a big deal, I don't want to add to your workload.
No, I appreciate that. And I, that's something that we, because it fluctuates, so it's, you're not adding to, it's something that we've continuously tried to remind ourselves that we have to continue to look at. But then you get a phone call that, there's someone else here, there's another case, sorry Walter, you got to leave, because he walks in, and he always, every time he walks in, there's another emergency that comes in. I'm not blaming Walter.
I did not walk in at all this week.
I know, you were good then, but.
So no emergencies, okay?
So yeah.
I will stay away from central office.
I think that, that we're in the process of compiling, trying to compile that in a more easily readable expla, reasonable format, to help better drive what these decisions are going to be going forward. And as I said earlier, like, my hope was that we can at least, at a minimum, start expanding on what we were doing. My hope was, we got to this point, okay, we had our little false spike, like everyone told us was coming, and then if you looked at, I don't have it up any longer, you know, you hit that 2%, little 2 and 1/2%, our numbers reflected, but then it was starting to creep down, so maybe that was it. So maybe we can't just flip the switch and bring everybody back, but maybe we can start doing things like Ms. LeBlanc said, offering more opportunities for, for kids to come back in. Maybe getting creative around Wednesdays again, as, as something that we've, that we're, that's under consideration of, you know, if you're in Cohort A, if we did were to eliminate the Wednesdays, Cohort A, and then go one week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then alternate the following week. So yeah, we eliminate that remote day, but now you're getting three days a week for a period of time, until we can gradually get everybody back in. Those are the things we're trying to, and this data helps, because that'll help us drive that decision, but because it was fluctuating so much, we just haven't sat down to do it. But I will, you have asked for that before, I will try to put something together and at least share with the board about what our, at minimum, what our total numbers are.
I appreciate it, thank you. That is, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. So I really have nothing to report, other than thank you for the presentation. Yes, I was also part of the JFK walkthrough. We had actually two of them, one for the board member, for the committee members, and one for the, for the council and board members. So I will, I will have a little presentation that I did not have Guy help me with during the JFK Building Committee, so it's pretty raw. We'll leave it at that. And just remind everyone, do the right thing and vote on next Tuesday. That's all. Voting is important, and just get out and vote. So with that, we will go on to unfinished business. We have none.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, I've had the 20 minutes to think about this now, and I'm just going to throw it out to you as, you don't, can't take a vote on it. I didn't want to spring information on you guys as a board, especially when I was just getting it a couple hours ago. They said that the information from the governor kind of changed my thought process on this. But the more I'm sitting here thinking this evening, there's a lot of parents watching and wanting to know what's going to happen with their kids. So although I've got to the end of the week and Thursday's numbers, based on what we have in hand right now, it doesn't appear. And I will also share that I can't give you the names of the places, but there are surrounding communities that are expecting bad news on Thursday, as far as some of their color coding changing, which will have an effect on us, because we obviously interact in other communities. So I know a couple of members asked if, when it's going to be official. I'm, I'm in a position now to make it official if you guys want, or if you want me to wait, I'll just give you a head nod, you want to keep people stringing along. I needed the 20 minutes to get my head around, do I just do it now, or do I wait off for Thursday?
Well, we bumped it up by three days last time, why don't we just bump it up by three days?
If you guys are comfortable with that, and again, I don't want to be as, come across as being indecisive, I just want people to know what goes into it. I do not take this decision lightly, but I just think it's in everyone's best interest, especially for parents who need to plan that we'll continue on this model until Thanksgiving, and then stay tuned, because a lot of information's coming in about, as I shared, about the concerns for Thanksgiving. So at this point, I, that, that's what I'm going to be moving toward.
Mr. Ryder, you have another question?
Yes, just because as we move into
Yes, just because as we move into the two weeks leading up to Thanksgiving, we have a couple of early release days scheduled. Could you just explain what we'll do on those Tuesdays and Thursdays? We have an early release day on the 10th, which is a Tuesday, the 12th, which is a Thursday.
We'll still follow the early release schedule.
Okay.
Because there's, there's times designated to, and to be honest, what we're, one of the other struggles that we're having, and you may have noticed is by communication that was very long that I sent out last week, we have to take into consideration, I think Mr. Delaney articulated that very well for all of you the last time he sat here. Something that's very, very real is the impact that being in this environment is having on our staff, particularly our teachers. Having to teach six kids in a class and seven kids on a, on a device at the same time, you're asking them to do two different jobs at the same time. And we haven't created any additional time. The biggest resource we can give staff members is time. So you notice I had to make an adjustment to the Wednesday schedule because I had to give these, our staff members some time to catch their breath. Because my, my fear, and I, and I indicated this in my communication to all of you and to, to our staff, was I really have a genuine fear of what this is going to do to this profession because people are leaving in droves. So I, I would remain with that early release schedule as planned because anytime I can give our staff, particularly our teachers, a little bit of extra time to either create additional professional development that they're yearning for, or just give them some time to pick their head up above water, I'm going to do it until we get to this, until we get past this. So yes, I will keep that on there.
No, I just want to make sure parents knew. So if you do go to school on that day, you're going to come home just like any other early release Tuesday or Thursday. And if you are learning from home on one of those two days, you'll just be wrapping up a little bit earlier than normal.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Hall.
Aren't we going to get this presentation?
I'm going to do it during the JFK Building Committee update.
Okay.
Unless you want me to do it now, it's up to you.
It seemed appropriate now because it's part of your report.
Let me, let, let's, Ms. LeBlanc has a question, we can do it now.
So November 9th was the last cutoff date. So again, if parents wanted to opt in.
Yes.
They can opt in.
We would allow parents to opt in for, for November 9th if they wish.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, obviously I wasn't anticipating doing this tonight. So I have, I will obviously communicate, I, I can't assume every single family in town is watching. So I will communicate that with, with the community by the end of this week with all the details. And I'm sure there are things I'm missing because to be quite honest, we weren't anticipating doing this. But the information over the last couple of days is just that I have a, and I understand people aren't going to agree with this. And I, I get that, that this is forcing all of us to make decisions that we never thought we would have to make and to have to live with the consequences of the decisions, which can mean alienating half of the population that you serve. And nobody ever wants to do that. But I just think at some point, I have to be responsible for it. My name is on all of this and people's health is all on this. And my staff is getting burned out on all of this. And our, your kids' teachers are struggling with all this. We need to give them some, some peace of mind that this is how it's going to be. So there are things I'm sure that I'm missing. I will wrap all that up and send something out to the public by this week.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Salazar.
Thank you. Sorry, Ed, you know, you, you mentioned teachers and I know that we heard from Mr. Delaney last week. Is there, if there are people, citizens here of Enfield, and I actually know two personally, if there are people that are interested, interested in exploring this as an opportunity in terms of teaching or at least substituting, what, what is the path that you would recommend for these individuals to follow?
The immediate path is to go on our website, there's a link to Kelly Services, that's our substituting company. And what I would recommend or highly encourage anyone who is interested, you can designate where you would be interested in working. And you can designate Enfield only, so that way they won't try to send you to another community. I would strongly encourage that because then they would definitely be on our list. And in the event, you know, depending upon qualifications, all day-to-day substitutes go through Kelly. Anything above that, because there's certification guidelines that will go through Human Resources. But if it's someone who is just interested, but they don't have a, you know, teacher credentials. Register with Kelly Services, it's on our website. There's a box on it says, where do you want to work? Click Enfield only.
Okay.
Please don't click Manchester or East Hartford, let them deal on their own, Enfield only. And I can promise you, they will turn around and contact that person immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. LeBlanc.
I'm sorry. So Scott had asked if we were going to follow the Wednesday schedule, but Wednesday's asynchronous now. So would, if we go to a snow day, it wouldn't necessarily follow the Wednesday schedule now because it's asynchronous.
I'm sorry, you're right, Wednesday would go back to the old Wednesday.
The old Wednesday synchronous.
Be remote learning, the old Wednesday synchronous.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
I'm playing tennis here, so I'll just. Okay, all set. So on Ms. Hall's request, I will go through this presentation now. So, and again, it's very crude, so go ahead to the next slide. So we start off with the Blue Wing. Yeah, I'm just going to look at this one up here in front of me. So go ahead, that's just a picture of the Blue Wing. So that's the inside of the Blue Wing. And because of the two dates that I, that we met, the left picture is the 14th that are showing open windows and the right picture is the 21st that's showing windows already installed. So within a week, they've already installed windows. And that's on the second floor of the E Wing, this is, I read up, the Blue Wing. This is also the second floor of the Blue Wing from the field end looking towards the center of the spoke. So all the, all the lockers have been removed and, and all piping and everything has been up in the ceilings. And that's a classroom, I believe on the right side of the, of the, I think that's our first classroom on the right, I took a picture inside. That is way down the end of the Blue Wing, near the center spoke. On the left, that's going to be a science room, so there's already piping in for, for sinks. For the, I think it's a chemistry lab or a science lab. And that is the restroom on the right. I believe that was the boys restroom on the right, on the, on the second floor of the, of the Blue Wing. And that's, the left picture, and both pictures are a week later, they've already started installing piping for the fixtures. And, and that's going to be, that's going to be a wall. The piping goes in and then they'll build the wall around the piping. So the left side will be the boys and the yellow side will be the girls. This is the outside of the Blue Wing. And if you could see around the pictures on the second floor, how there's like, there's a new sill, new concrete sill for each window, well, even on the first floor too. But how there's also, and there'll be a picture coming up showing it better, but how the bricks have been removed and, and replaced because of the PCBs that they found. Go ahead to the next one. So this is a new mechanical room that they built. And again, this is between, the left is on the 14th and the right is on the 21st. So within a week, they poured the floor and already built the walls to close that room. And this is going to be all new electrical, the sprinkler systems, everything, all new services are going to be built here because they couldn't use the existing mechanical room because the, the existing mechanical room is still servicing the rest of the, the, the rest of the school. So they're going to pipe, they're going to use, a new mechanical room is going to be, so this will service the Blue Wing and then will service all the other wings as they get brought on. So this is from outside of the new auditorium. It's, it, they still have to finish the wall in front, but the, the wall's left open so they can have access into it for now. And the far side of that will be the stage. And that's just another picture of that, I don't see, again, I didn't know how that picture got in there. This is showing the stage part. So the right, the left picture is a close-up of the left side of the stage and then the right side, that's, that, that's the whole back is the stage area, is going to be the stage with access to the hallways. And this is the, this was, this was the pool and somebody forgot to tell the water that it's not a pool anymore. But it, you know, the, the water's been there for how many years? So I guess it's the last to leave, so. But this will be the new cafeteria with access to the new, the new kitchen in, in those openings. And then this is the view from the other side where they took the part of the, no, this was all part of the pool area, yes. And they filled it, they filled in the pool. And this is, those holes, this is where the new kitchen will be. So it's all piping, put in for kitchen, for drains or sinks or whatever. Now this is what I showed you, talked about the windows with the PCBs. The right window's already corrected, you see the new bricks. The left window is where they took out the bricks. And if you see on the left window and the right, there's little drill holes, that's, they drill those holes for testing. And if it comes back, that, that's the last brick, they just cut that brick out and put a new one in. Yeah. And this will be the new public entrance for, between the gym and the auditorium. There's going to be a new public entrance there where I believe this is part of, it could be a little school store in there. And in the right picture, this, the, the wall on the right is the auditorium wall. And those little doors on the left are going to be public restrooms for the, for the, any events that go on in the auditorium. And this is in the existing, I believe it's the Black Wing. This will be the new, the new band and orchestra rooms, which are right now being used as storage. But if you see in the background is the, you'll see the portables through the windows. So it's on the side where the portables is. And what they're also doing out where the portable is, is when it's all said and done, they're going to have, they're going to make little outdoor classroom areas out there too. So that's, there'll be pictures soon to come on that. And that's it, very simple. Hopefully you've got something out of it.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
How much is the fact that they've been working right along going to cut from the end goal of the original date of finals?
I don't think they have that grasp yet. I mean, right now, the end goal is, is a definite that they're not going to exceed it. But I don't think they want to announce any, bringing it up. But they are going to release this part two, the Blue Wing will be released in February, where then we'll take over the next wing to do, so. So they say in another three months that that, that Blue Wing will be complete. But they are, honestly, you know, it was a tight schedule to begin with to get it done by August 2022. But, and they are on that schedule, very, they're very confident that that schedule is to hold now. And, and any chances they can, they will push, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. LeBlanc.
Just a comment.
Yeah, you were there too.
I was there and it was amazing to see that the, the work they're doing. And like Mr. Ungary said, they're ahead of schedule because in this case, COVID actually helped us, believe it or not. And I'm excited to see the next stage in, in six months to see what's happening. But having gone to that school, it's amazing what, what they're doing and how quickly they're working and efficiently as well.
And come back to what COVID, when the bids went out back in March and April, that we got some real good pricing because a lot of projects were stopped for COVID. So these people are looking for work to do. So when, when contractors got the word that we have a job, they jumped on it and gave us some real, real great pricing, so. So stay tuned, there will be more updates. I will try to get more updates as we go because they, they've been trying to do a public thing like they did with the high school, but because of COVID, we have no access to the auditoriums or anything to do this. So we will try to, I will try to bring more updates as we go, so. Any other questions? All right, so that finishes, oh, Mr. LeBlanc, I'm sorry.
Um, I'll just follow up. I still think it would be beneficial for maybe come spring of '21 if we could maybe have Randy come in and him and his team do another presentation for the public.
I'm trying to get him in here even sooner, maybe in December, we can have him in here too. Definitely, they could even do it remotely or something. All right, so that finishes board member comments unless, Mr. LeBlanc, you, we're still in board member comments, you just have any?
I didn't mention the sub tighties yet because I was going to do it in the correspondence. So I know you were going to mention this during your board member comments, so.
Uh, yes, correct. For tonight, given that, I'm coming from another commitment, I'll leave it at that.
The first question, did the kids win?
Yes, we did, a great way to end the season, so.
So you are allowed, you are allowed to speak.
Little hyped up, little all over the place right now, so.
You are allowed to speak now.
So, but yeah, I'll hold off for tonight, thank you.
Okay.
But Tina, can you still bring it up just because I'm not prepared with it in front of me, so?
Okay, so now, number 10, unfinished business we have done. Number 11, approval, uh, 11A, approval of fiscal year 2020 state head start, state head start grant. So moved by Ms. Hall, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any presentation or just what we have in our packet?
It's in, yeah, the information's in your packet.
So this is just every year, we, I think this is a yearly thing we do?
This is a separate from the large grant that we usually apply for. This is a state grant. We're usually looking for a federal grant. So the significant difference from $790,000 to 100,000.
100,000 works too, so. Every little bit counts.
Absolutely.
So hearing, no discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Ryder?
Four.
Mr. Salazar?
Four.
Mrs. Thurston? Mr. Ungary?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Four.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairman Crizell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
11B, approval of regular BOE meeting schedule for 2021. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Thurston.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. And this is also in your packet and just to spoil you guys' fun, we have 18 days of meetings in 2021 until our election. So just be here or be square. Any other comments?
Are the proposed dates follow the policy?
Yes, they do. I double-checked that there's not any holidays or nothing that are conflicting. No anniversaries of mine or no birthdays either, so we're good there. Almost close, but May 25th was almost close, but it's not, so. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Ryder?
Four.
Mr. Salazar?
Four.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mr. Ungary?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Four.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairman Crizell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
11C, approval of 5,000 series policy. Mr. Salazar, I believe we're going to keep this on the table for now.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we met, the policy committee meeting met last night. And I believe we have a working draft that we now can present to the board, but we just couldn't get it in time to publish it with this meeting. So it'll have to be reviewed at the next meeting.
So, so stay tuned, Kathy will, Kathy will forward us the, the final packet of 5,000s that were.
Correct.
That were approved by the policy committee.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So number 12, board committee reports, curriculum, Mr. LeBlanc. And just before we start, just so you know, curriculum, finance and policy are all meeting in person from this point on, unless otherwise changed.
Thank you for letting us know.
All right, well, and curriculum, and excuse me, I, I don't have any notes with me this evening. But the overall agenda was, we discussed how from grade six to 11, they were incorporating equity into the lessons that were being taught at the middle and high school levels and trying to figure out different ways to have, you have a lesson and how we're going to incorporate equity and into those lessons basically. And we also went over AP scores, which have significantly improved since last year, which is amazing, especially given all the challenges that this year has presented. So all around, really good stuff. And our next meeting is someone from the committee, do we? There you go.
There you go. If I missed anything, Joyce or Bill, you guys can comment.
I'd like to make a comment, it wasn't simply equity, but social and emotional learning, which is a little bit broader and more inclusive than just the point of equity.
Now, the only thing I can add to that is that regarding the AP scores, I think that was certainly cause for celebration, the vast majority of the ones that were looked at, we are doing better than the average at the state, so certainly, you know, something to commend our, our teachers and staff on, and obviously the students. There were a couple of areas that they are looking, the office is looking as to why we did not perform as well as we did previously, but it was only a couple of areas, and again, overall the picture is very positive, so I think there's a lot of congratulations that need to be stated to teachers, staff, and the students, so just wanted to expand upon that.
Thank you. Finance met last Monday, and we do have a report to present during the approvals of accounts. Policy, Mr. Salazar.
Well, sir, I think I'm just repeating myself, we met yesterday, we agreed on what policies to present forward to the board for our next board meeting, and those will be, the packets will be sent and they will be published in time. We also agreed on a working model to pursue for the approval of the 16, 6,000s. That was the gist of the meeting.
Okay. Leadership, we have none, joint facilities met and started discussing our plans for next summer on what roofs to start on. So we're going to start putting them out for design bid on which roofs to, seeing that Henry Barnard is totally complete now, and we're still waiting for state reimbursements, but other than that, that's, that's the joint facilities. JFK was that presentation we just had, and they're working hard on keeping everything on, on schedule, like I said, and money-wise, we're still on budget. Joint security doesn't meet till December, I believe. To back up on JFK, I do want to reach out to the staff also when, you know, when we asked for the, for the walkthrough, Gilbain's staff was there available, and, and just all the schools to just to say that the staff are doing an awesome job for all our schools, so. And joint insurance is also meeting in December, so. So we move to number 13, approval of minutes, regular board of ed meeting minutes, October 13, 2020. Moved by Ms. Thurston, seconded by Mr. LeBlank. Any discussions, changes, show of hands, all in favor?
I have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hall, you go ahead.
I have suggested a modification to the comments that I made on page four, I submitted it to Kathy in typed form.
Okay.
So that.
She will make the changes.
I wanted to just simply clarify what I was attempting to do.
She's watching from home, so she'll make the changes.
Exactly.
So as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
And anybody against? You in favor? Okay, so nine in favor, zero against.
There's only eight of us.
Oh, eight, yes. Again, I don't, I miscounted, sorry. Eight in favor, zero against. So number 14, approval of payroll for the month of September. I will read these. The finance committee met on October 19, 2020 to review financial statements for the month of September, year to date, and examine various documents related to finance. Our review concluded there is nothing significant to report to the board. So I need a motion to accept the superintendent certification as follows. I hereby certify that the month of September total expenditures amount to $5,612,240.58, broken down between payroll totaling $3,918,399.99, and other accounts totaling $1,693,939.59. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the book of accounts. Copies of approval and checks and invoices are properly documented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hall, seconded by Mr. Ungeyer. Any discussion? All in favor? Eight in favor, zero against. And one more. The finance committee met on October 19, 2020 to review financial statements for grants during the month of September, year to date, and to examine various documents related to finance. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. I need a motion to accept the superintendent certification as follows. I certify that in the month of September, the total grants and Head Start expenditures amount to $303,342.2, broken down between payroll totaling $271,743.80, and other accounts totaling $31,596.22. All payments have been made in accordance with approved budget and are properly accounted for within the book of accounts. Copies of approved checks and invoices are properly documented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hall, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any discussion? All in favor? Eight in favor, zero against. And we have no line item transfers, thank you very much. We move to number 15, correspondents and communications.
Well, thanks.
Ms. LeBlank.
Yep. Okay, I have two updates from Kite. Kite is hosting a free parent webinar, Where Am I and How Did I Get Here: Waking Up in a 2020 Household with Peg Olivera from Yale's Giselle Institute. It's Monday, November 2nd, it's free, and you can register at enfieldkite.org. Kite also welcomes all to our monthly collaborative meeting. We meet the first Wednesday of every month. Our next meeting is virtual on November 4th at 5:30 PM. I also have something from Miss Valley over at our Stowe Early Learning Center, it's a letter, and it says, greetings, board members, thank you for your continued dedication to our kids, families, and staff. These days you can never have too many masks, masks. All pre-Kers at Stowe have a child-sized version of these, enjoy. Jaclyn Valley. And I'm so excited to get another mask because I love this kind, it's the same thing. It's a mask with the eaglet on it. So.
Hold on, hold it up, he's zooming in right now.
Okay. Huh? The eaglet has a name? What's his name?
Turn it to the eaglet, turn it, turn it so the eaglet shows.
Oh, his name is Silk.
No, look that way.
Silk.
You can't see it. There you go, yeah, there you go, a little more, a little more to the left. There it is.
And what's the eaglet's name?
I don't know if it's official, I call him Silk.
Silk, okay.
Stowe Early Learning Center.
Silk, okay. So eaglet the silk. So stop by my desk, because I have a desk now, to get your letter and your eaglet mask before you leave the board meeting, and that's all I have for tonight.
And I have one more, one more comment, but I forgot during my board member comments, a little good to the order. My wife and I are celebrating 27 years this Friday, so I want to say happy anniversary to my wife, which I usually don't say, but it so happens that it didn't fall out of meeting this year, so. Wanted to throw that out there. Do we have a need for executive session? No, we do not. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Thurston. Seconded by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? All in favor? Eight in favor, zero against, we are adjourned, thank you, thank you ATV, and thank you all for watching. Have a good night.